I'd like to call this meeting of the Vader City Council to order at 6:14. On November 21st, 2019. We need a roll call and we now have a roll call by our city clerk.
Okay. Randy Hall?
Here.
Jason Bailey?
Here.
Joe Shai?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Samantha Lovely?
Here.
And Mayor Wilson?
Here.
You have a corner. Okay. Next, we need to stand. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I want to remind everybody that there will not be a city council meeting next week on November 28th due to Thanksgiving holiday. And tonight's meeting will replace next week's meeting. The next council meeting will be on December the 12th and is scheduled to be the last council meeting in December. And I plan to swear in the new and re-elected officers at the end of that meeting so that we can be ready for January. We heard from the Department of Transportation that they will resume work on the Blackamis Bridge on December 2nd and they are hoping to be finished in mid-late May in 2002.
No, no, not 2002. 2020.
Yeah.
Still boo.
Yeah, still boo.
That's under the table, now it's May.
Yeah, 2020.
Does the council have any reports?
No reports? And the agenda approval? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda here?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there counsel, is there any counsel discussion? All those in favor say aye or any opposed?
Aye.
One at a time. All those in favor? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting and public hearing on 11:14 2019.
Do we have a second on that?
I have seven.
Is there any counsel discussion? Is that Randy?
Yes.
Randy's here. I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, I'm thinking. For all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Do we have, this is for voucher approval. Do we have a motion to approve the vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers. First half of November, eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and eight cents. The end of November 2019, thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents for a total for November 2019 of fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents.
Do we have, is there any counsel discussion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And is there any counsel discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Special reports. Do we have a report from the park board?
The person who was supposed to report for the park board could not be here. She called her backup and her backup had to work late. So they do not have a report this time. They apologize. They'll hopefully have someone here at the next meeting to report their status.
Do we have a report from the planning committee?
Well, I kind of do. But I was planning on reporting. My dates are off. Hi, everybody. Good evening. We had a couple of meetings since I last reported. Our last meeting, main meeting, was a public meeting regarding the variance that you folks are going to be speaking about here this evening. And then we had a meeting last week where we finalized that decision-making process on our end for you. Other regards to the comp plan, I know that Gary was working, he's still working on it, and I know that he said he's pretty much hasn't wrapped up. But the original schedule that he gave us for public meeting and CIPA and Commerce and all of that were beyond those time dates because they were back in September and October. Jill, do you happen to know where we're at with regards? I know we have to do the public meeting and I know the other stuff kind of happened.
I'm not sure. The final draft is what he's planning to have at the December meeting, December 19th.
For a, for a, oh, okay.
Yes, the final draft and then whatever comes after that will have to be after that. I don't, I don't know. I don't look that.
And that again was when?
December 19th is the next planning committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And then after that, we have the public meeting once we have the final draft. And it looks like that, based on what this is showing, if we're doing that, it probably would be the, the meeting, the second meeting we would have in January. Because it says that we would have the compile all elements into the proposed final draft and update table content, et cetera, by early September.
So that will be December.
So now that's December. And then public meeting was supposed to be late September. So with the holidays, I'm saying it's probably just in January.
It's going to be when in January?
Yeah. Not sure if it'll be our first or second meeting of the month of January for the public meeting.
Thank you. The first item of this.
Hold on. Are you ready? Are you done?
I guess I am.
Did I shoot you away? I'm sorry.
No, we were good. We're all good. You all didn't have any questions about anything, right?
No.
All right. Thanks.
The first item for business for council is to hold a hearing on the Smith variance application. This will be quasi-judicial hearing based on the record created by the planning committee. This is a closed-record decision and no new information will be allowed.
Pause.
Pause. I'm recusing myself because Victoria's on the planning committee.
Ah.
I love the simulator area.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Go enjoy your car. Okay, now you can keep reading.
Okay. Tonight, we're considering the planning committee's recommendation on the application and we may hear argument from the applicant and the planning director. Following argument, we will deliberate on the committee's recommendation. The city attorney, Jennifer Robertson, who is applying, appearing by telephone, will now address the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yep.
Yeah.
All righty. So unlike those meetings that the city council conducts, tonight the city council will be sitting in a quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial manner. What this means is that the council members are sitting as judges and are here to discuss the variance application as recommended by the planning committee. As judges, the council will need to be impartial, weigh the facts as presented, and listen to, and consider the findings of the planning committee. You will also need to acquire the standards in the Vader code for whatever variance can be granted. This also means that the city council will need to meet certain standards with its judges, including what is called the doctrine of the appearance of fairness, which is the standard that you not only need to be fair, but that you also must appear fair. Council members need to disclose on the record any contacts that they may have had with any party or any other person about this application. These are called ex parte contacts, contacts. For appearance of fairness, what this means is that you need to disclose if you have a relationship with any party to the application that would create a conflict or would seem, make it seem as if you could not be fair in this application. In Vader, being a small town, we have two planning committee members who are married to city council members. While this is not an issue on legislative matters, it creates an appearance of fairness issue for quasi-judicial matters. Therefore, in order to avoid an appearance of fairness problem, at the planning committee level, committee member Kathy Hall recuses herself, but doesn't matter. This rests the claim with a quorum of three members. At the council decision point, in order to avoid appearance of fairness issue, council member Mike Parsons has recused himself from this decision. By council member Parsons recusing himself and Kathy Hall, committee member recusing herself at the planning committee, there will be no family relationship between the decision-makers at the planning committee and at the council level. So apart from what I just mentioned, I'd like to ask the council members if they have any appearance of fairness issues or any ex parte contacts they would like to disclose pertaining to this application. Now, just for context, these will be contacts since September, which is when the application was filed. And also for the record, the city clerk has communicated with the council, as has the city attorney, with regard to logistics and administrative processes. So also, I believe that most council members, if not all, have, are aware of the property, have been by the property, have seen it in person. So that is on the record as well. So when I, when we go to each council member, if you'll just say whether you have anything to disclose. If you have nothing to disclose, you can just say, "I have nothing to disclose." So could we go through, starting with Mr. Shai?
I have nothing to disclose.
Your own council members?
I have nothing to disclose.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to disclose?
Oh. This is Councilman Jason Bailey. I've been approached by Mr. Smith twice. And he was letting me know his concerns and, and his suggestions for me to understand his side of the case at two different times.
All right. And did he, okay, and then council member Lovely, you received a message from someone who has, you have a copy of that?
Yeah, I sent a copy of that to the city clerk. She's unable to print it. It was a message from Cindy Radcliffe on November 9th. It was just kind of her opinion about how much the city has spent and giving me a recommendation to drive around the city in regards to the variance and just kind of noting that there are other properties like that around town with similar shed or garages. But the clerk wasn't able to print it.
Has every council member had a chance to disclose any contact?
No, I don't have any contact, but I, I did walk by the property a couple weeks ago. I've seen the property.
All righty. Okay, is the applicant in the room?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Okay. Does the applicant or their attorney wish to offer any rebuttal to any of the contacts that have been disclosed?
Not this time. We will.
Okay. Does anyone wish to give a challenge to any members participating in this hearing on appearance of fairness grounds?
There appears to be none.
Okay. Well, then this period for challenges is now closed and the council can now begin to hear arguments if any is wanting to be made.
So do you turn then the time back over to the mayor?
Yes, I'm turning it back over to the mayor to make, if anyone would like, if the applicant would like to make argument, the city council can then open a hearing and take argument. But it has to be based on the record.
Oh, so they don't have to open a hearing if there's no additional argument made?
If no one wants to make argument, then they, they can open a hearing, they can talk or not talk, and then they can close the hearing.
Okay.
That's correct. I apologize. Am I unclear?
So is there deliberation?
So if they open a hearing to take argument, if there's no argument, that's fine. I'll just close the hearing.
Oh, so we close the hearing before the deliberation?
Yes, you close the hearing. Hearing is just to take argument.
Okay.
They will open the hearing if the applicant would like to present argument based on the record. They can do so. The planning director is not able to be here tonight, so he will not be making the presentation.
Okay.
And then, or if no one wants to talk, then we would close it that time. Only the applicant can, or the applicant's attorney can make argument. Then we would close the hearing. At that point, then the council can begin deliberation.
Okay. Okay.
Is that clear?
Yes, thank you. So you can go ahead and take over where your script left off on page three. Where it says, "Open public hearing." You can go ahead and start there.
Open public hearing. We have a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing at 6:27 for...
You don't do a time on this.
Okay. At 6:27.
I'll second that.
Is there any counsel discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, the motion has carried. I call this public hearing to order at 6:27. 27, I got it. This is not a general public comment period. This period is solely for the purpose of taking argument from the parties of the case. No new information be provided and the argument is to be based solely on the record created by the planning committee. Does the applicant wish to present argument to the council?
I wish to just present some statements. Can I just step up?
If they...
So the answer is yes.
Yes, they can, yeah. You will be limited to 10 minutes and you may now address the city council.
My name is Tanya Avery. I represent the Smiths. This won't take 10 minutes. I just want to go on record for future use. We need to understand here of record, which was just made, that there were several city council members that have additional information after the planning committee meeting was closed, so the parties that went by the property for inspection, apparently. Item number 10 on the list presented by Ms. Robertson. The accessory structures located on the surrounding properties were built prior to the adoption of the 15-foot rear yard setback requirement. It's of record in Lewis County Code, or in Lewis County records that, this is, this is false. There's structures that were built in 2003. And also, the record is based on building considerations, which this is supposed to be a planning committee meeting. And one further thing is the violation of the ordinance of reporting back to the Smiths was, was three days late. I just want to put that on record just for future use. Thank you very much.
Now, is, we will have deliberation, right?
Actually, I was wrong in this. This is, Jennifer said now we need to close the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So you need to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I ask you for a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:32.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
The motion is carried.
The motion is carried.
May I, Mayor?
Yes?
May I speak?
Yes, you can.
Before you begin deliberations, I wanted to point out an error in the planning committee decision where it cites the International Residential Code in section on page two, at the bottom of page two. It cites the State of Development Regulations, Section R105. That actually is a misrepresentation. It should be the Vader Building Code, which adopts the International Residential Code, Section R105.1 of the IRC. So I just wanted to point out that mistake to the council. And then go ahead and deliberate now. Thank you.
Go ahead and follow your script under deliberation laws. Next page. There you go.
Yep. Okay. Counsel decision, I'm on page five.
You should be on page four. You will now begin. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
See?
Just right at the top. We will now begin.
We have begun deliberation. We need to walk through the recommendation of the planning committee, which addresses each of the four conditions that must be met for granting the variance. The time is now yours to deliberate. So we can continue with the discussion, I guess.
Yeah, let council discuss.
Time for you guys to discuss.
We're discussing.
Well, I would, I would say the planning committee did a thorough job of going through it and their decision seemed to be fair. I would say I, I was just going to add, I didn't, I didn't see that property after the public, after the planning committee. I seen it prior to it. She mentioned that it was after the planning committee. Not that it really make too much difference, but...
I've actually been down the alley, drove past it, turned around at it. There's a building that's been there since early 1900s that's, that's in front of the building. You can't even see it from the end of the alley. It's non-obstructing, it's...
Ms. Councilwoman, can you just put your comments to the record?
You can only discuss the items on the record and that was not in the record.
Yeah, the disclosure term is done and you just said that you went down the alley. But anything you saw, though, you cannot consider is based on the record.
Based on the record. Sorry.
Something based on the record. I think the plan, the planning committee did a thorough, an act of job. I don't know how you guys feel about that. Well, there are the four conditions to grant a variance and it seems pretty clear that none of the four conditions were met.
The planning committee said one of them was met.
One was met.
I'm sorry. Item, line 13, that was the one that was met. So one of the, one out of the four. No mistake. Which is the...
The D.
This one. Right, the one condition that was met. The parcel, the parcels located near the applicant's property are developed under a prior rear yard setback and are generally developed with an approximately five-foot rear yard setback. The proposed variance is thus consistent with the development pattern that exists nearby and thus the granting of such variance will not be materially detrimental to public welfare or injuries to the property or improvement in the vicinity and the zone in which the subject property is situated. And that makes sense. I mean, the, there are other, there... But as I said, the other three do not meet the criteria.
I agree. The criteria is not met.
More discussion? Deliberation, I suppose, is the proper term.
If you've finished deliberating, you can let the mayor know you're ready to move on.
Are we?
Yeah.
I am. We are ready to move on to the item five.
So at the top of page four, Lois, where it says motion on the topic?
Yes.
That's where you would start.
I have it here. Is there a motion on the planning committee's recommendation?
So this is where you would say whether you agree with the recommendation or you disagree with the recommendation. You'd need a motion to make your decision about whether you agree with their recommendation.
I make a motion to agree with the planning committee's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Is there a counsel discussion? Is there any council?
This is, we're still, yeah. This, this thing, so.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution?
So at this point, Mayor, if you would like to pass a resolution supporting the planning committee's decision, with that one correction that I mentioned, I believe you have copies of the draft of resolution in your junk packet material.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that, it's on here in the back?
It's this one.
Yours is in the other room, Lois.
Oh.
It's Resolution 20.
Okay.
In your packet. There's a motion there if you...
That's the...
That would be the next step in this process. Would be denying, this resolution puts forth the verdict that you deny the resolution or deny the variance submitted by Reggie and Linda Smith.
I move to approve Resolution 20-2019, denying the application for a variance by Reginald and Linda Smith at 518 B Street, Vader. Application file number VAD19-16-V substantially as written.
And...
I second the motion.
Second motion?
Seconded by Randy Hall.
Okay, seconded by Randy Hall. Is there any other counsel discussion on it? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. The applicant and members of the public should not contact or communicate with any member of the city council regarding the application until such time as city council's decision becomes final under law. You may contact members of the council on issues unrelated to the application. Members of the city council shall avoid an ex parte contract or communication with the applicant or with any person favoring or opposing this application about this decision until after the city council's decision becomes final. You have a motion?
That's it. This is the part that we did earlier. I put it in the wrong place. We're going to go on to item number two, which is halfway down your page, but if you can pause for just a moment. Oh, you're going to go get Mike. Invite Mike to come back in.
Okay, I'm going to hang up now. Thank you, council. Have a Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You're lucky, Jennifer. Shut this recording.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Lois?
Yes.
Why did the stuff work on pretty good?
They didn't stop work. The bridge...
Yeah, they did.
Oh, did they?
They had problems getting pylons.
They, when they were digging, they found some additional problems and just had to get more steel. and they had to give more steel, and they had to order more steel, so they had to...
You need some man, oh, he is walking through my...
Well, they have the steel in now, or it's coming up, they have to start up starting in December.
Name something.
They said late May 2020.
That's a deal. That probably means divide or...
They're starting up again in December 2nd.
And online, I read somewhere, I think it was Lewis County Fire Department, that said they're trying to move that May 21 date up, but it's not official yet.
Okay, Lois?
Yeah.
Back on page five, right at the midway point where it says, "The second item of business."
And the second item of business is for council to discuss the 2020 budget and to hold a final public hearing on the matter. Does council have any questions or comments on the budget figures before we begin the hearing?
I think our budget looks good.
Want to give you guys an opportunity to...
Right, another official public comment. I'm excited to have some...
Okay, do we have a motion to open the public hearing regarding the 2020 budget?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing regarding the 2020 budget.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any council discussion?
How long we want the public hearing, that would be in the council discussion?
Zero. Zero minutes.
We'll just do one minute, how's that? Can we do that now?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we're doing it for one minute?
Yeah, we gotta stay here in silence for a little bit.
Okay, so we got five votes.
In silence?
Water group.
I was just in detention, I can't be in silence very much longer.
Mike doesn't know how to say quiet.
Lois needs to continue meeting, mayors, Wilsons.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. You guys both did, right?
Yep.
That's what I heard, okay. I call this public hearing to order at 7:45. Seven forty-five.
Six forty-five.
I keep getting...
I need to get a digital clock.
Well, I got, from where I sit...
For me, I have a glare, so I...
A glare that goes right...
Everyone has a glare with all these lights, so...
Anyway, this public hearing for the city council to hear citizens' opinions regarding the 2020 budget. As a reminder, this is not a question and answer period. It's designated for council to hear your comments and opinions on the topic. If anyone speaks out of turn, you'll be asked to please be quiet. If some, anyone speaks out of turn the second time, you'll be asked to leave the meeting and will be escorted out. Thank you for helping us to keep this meeting professionally, professional, and orderly. Has anyone signed up to the comment on the topic?
No, mayor.
No one has. No comments. Is there anyone else who wants to comment who hasn't had the opportunity to speak?
Can I just be unruly?
Just so you make it in the paper?
No, we can do it official.
I want to be unruly.
Oh, you want to get thrown out?
Right.
Oh, no. Sorry.
Can I throw him out?
He's available.
That's only pretty handy for us.
Okay, you guys.
Throw us all out.
Is there anyone who wants to make a comment who hasn't had the opportunity to speak? I don't know, said that once.
Oh, nobody? I'll make a motion that we close the, the public hearing at... Now, at 6:47.
Close the meeting at 6:47. Okay. I should have done, "Hearing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?"
Yeah, but he jumped it down, so now we just need to go to the second part.
I'll second that.
Here we go. The third item of business...
Nope, got to finish the motion, you just got a second, so what's after the second?
The same as usual up here, okay.
Same as usual.
Okay.
You're at the bottom of page six.
I am.
Okay, all those in favor?
All those in say, "Favor," say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion is carried. Close this public hearing at 6:47. Okay.
You did it.
I did it.
We did it in like one minute.
Yeah.
Which never happens, that happens.
Top of page seven.
Okay, I'm getting there.
We're all with someone.
I'm rambling this thing. The third item of business for tonight is the council consider Resolution 19-2019, authorizing the mayor to execute the credit card processing contract with Forte. Is there a motion on the proposed resolution? So you can pay with credit card.
I move to approve Resolution 19-2019, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract for credit card payment processing services with CSG Forte Payment Inc., or Forte Payment Inc., substantially as written.
Okay, is there any, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Who's, who's...
I'm sure they should fight about it. My rock, I agree, so they're...
Wait, they have to have one person named, who's going to be? Jason Daly, okay.
Is there any council discussion?
I am excited about this because it just brings us that much closer to the normal...
It might.
Normal life.
Something was brought to me months ago.
We're just going away.
Yes.
We're moving on, we actually got a credit card system. I thought I was so weird when I moved here and I couldn't come in and do...
Put your money through the slot.
Right.
Okay, so, I'll recast that.
Okay, that's the discussion. Everybody's happy about going modern, modern. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the motion is carried. Thank you, that's really good. The next item of business, if, business for council to consider is 201907, enacting the property tax levy rate for 2020. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2019-7, establishing a 0% increase in the property tax levy for the fiscal year 2020, exclusive of additional revenue of new construction or improvements to personal property or state assessed utilities, and establishing an effective date thereof.
Woo, that is cool. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any council discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. The last item on the agenda is for council to consider Resolution 21-2019, banking the unused property tax levy amounts for future use. Is there a motion on the resolution? Unused property tax levy amounts for future use.
I move to approve Resolution 21-2019, banking the excess property tax levy capacity for fiscal year 2020, substantially as written.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any council discussion? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. And public comments, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
Nope.
Nope?
What?
What's your number?
Done?
Oh, yeah, somebody's standing up.
I don't think it's time.
You guys are all doing great, considering you're just citizens of this...
Kissing with the ladies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yay, what a sweetie. I feel better already.
I like it. We take a lot of hits up here.
Is there any elected official comments that you want to make?
Amen.
Amen, okay, that's a good one. Turn, I need to adjourn at 7, no, 6:40.
6:42.
Hit that gavel.
Gavel, Lois.